I'm so happy that you're all here and thank you to Andy for suggesting that we have the forum here at the library where everybody can come out and enjoy it. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Chris Mays, who is our moderator for this evening.
Good evening. My name's Chris Mays. I'm a staff writer at the Brattleboro Reformer. I see a lot of familiar faces tonight and it's great to have such a good showing. Tonight, we're going to have a school board candidates forum for the Brattleboro Town School District. I just wanted to start out by saying how nice it is to have contested races. Especially with the Act 46 merger, which could see this board dissolve within a few months. It's great to see such participation. It really shows a commitment to the community. So we have Andy Davis and Jill Stahl Tyler running against each other for a three-year seat. We have Spoon Agave, Robin Morgan, and Emily Murphy-Corr running for two one-year seats. And we'll start off with opening statements from candidates about why they're running, what issues are important to them, and what experience they bring to the table. We'll start with Andy and we'll go to Jill and then for the next round of questions, we'll start the other way. The candidates will have two minutes to speak and I'll wave this paper up when it's almost up. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you all for coming. I've lived in Brattleboro since 1985 and during those years, I've taught music for 32 years in Wyndham County, recently retired, which opened up an opportunity to even consider something like this. I mostly taught here in Brattleboro. I've taught here for about 25 years at the elementary level. I've also taught in Dover, Guilford, and Townsend. And I mention that because as a school board member, I've seen a lot of different school cultures as an itinerant teacher. And I've worked with, I tried to count eight to 10 different principals and different superintendents over the years in two districts. But Brattleboro has always been a focus. My wife and I raised both of our children here in Brattleboro. They went to our schools K to 12 and both are very successful. They're very different. The one has a lifelong disability, the other was a very high-performing academic young man. And they both were served very well. And I think that's an important thing that our schools have to continue doing. I've been a town meeting rep for, I think, nine years. I'm in my third term as a town meeting rep and I followed the budget of schools, the policy issues, the decisions even. It's been just an ongoing concern of mine. I've paid attention to budgets and governance and the different issues that come up. I've run a business part-time out of my home, an educational publishing company with three other local friends. Our schools, and this is really what's the main thing, and our children are the most valuable asset we really have here in our town. It's the future. I'd like to contribute my insights as a member of the community to help continue the success of our schools and also deal with the challenges that we face right now.
Thanks. Emily?
Welcome, everyone. My name's Emily Murphy-Corr. And actually, Andy started off by saying in 1985, he moved here. In 1985, I was born. Fun fact. So I grew up in a small town not too far south of here in Western Massachusetts where my parents owned a family farm. My education career started as a teacher of middle schoolers in both the public school setting and then I taught in a Montessori school setting. And I used that classroom experience to transition to a position of director at a think tank in Boston where I focused on working with districts and schools to integrate the voices of teachers and community members into the policymaking process more effectively. So more recently, my husband and I moved to West Brattleboro where we opened a yoga and meditation retreat center focused on the traditional Vedic arts. And I'm running for the Brattleboro Town School Board with the hopes of sharing my skills in grant making and qualitative and quantitative research along with my experiences in inclusive policymaking and innovation with the town of Brattleboro. Thank you.
I'm Spoon Agave. Is it on? I'm Spoon Agave and I'm on the board now and I'm running again. I've lived in town about 30 years. I've done most everything on the municipal side from select board planning commission, development review board, charter, et cetera. And then went over to the school board when there was an opportunity there. So I've really rounded out my experience in this town. I have always been interested in virtually everything that happens around this town. And I'm particularly interested in education because at this point of time in our history, if our children don't have the education that they need to solve the problems that they're going to face, they're in trouble. And it's important, and I'm always thinking about what do kids need to know when they get out of school? What do they need to know about their world and what kind of a world they want it to be and how can they get there?
Hi, I'm Robin Morgan and I moved to Brattleboro in 2010. So I've been here less long than some of the other representatives here, but I have been serving on the school board for two years now. And I feel that it's very important that there are stakeholders at the table on the school board. So I have been focused on bringing my perspective as a parent of two children currently in the Brattleboro Town Schools to the school board. And I have another one who's going to be starting kindergarten probably in 2022. So I'm very invested in what happens in our schools. As a board member, one of the things that has been a goal for me and that I've been trying to bring focus to is creating an even more equitable and inclusive culture in our schools for all students, but especially for students who belong to marginalized groups. So that's one of the things that I hope to continue pushing forward if I'm reelected to the board.
So I'm Jill Stahl Tyler. I'm the current chair of the Brattleboro Town School Board and I think I've been on the board for eight years. And I guess we're all giving our pedigrees of how long we've been in town, but I now have surpassed time in Brattleboro than anywhere else. So I think I'm at 25 or 26 years here, something like that. And curiously, Robin and I both come from the same university back in Illinois. So I am still running for this and would like to see this through for the last either three months or another year, should that become a change in the law. I have three children, one of whom has graduated already but started in kindergarten, went all the way through. Two more still in the school and I currently work with exchange students and if anyone wants to host, I'm always looking. And I actually have one extra, a Spanish exchange student in our house that's in the Brattleboro Union High School. And last year, we had two. So very invested in the school. Started when my kids were in the elementary school and I started because I was concerned of a change in the music program. And have grown to really appreciate and respect infinitely the staff and the work that is done by our schools and dealing with every possible type of student and watching a change in the years that I've been on the board and involved in the schools of being concerned about, well, this student may not really achieve because that's their background, to a complete flip and change of, we look at each child and what does this child need and finding what does that child need and how to get to it. And I feel honored to have been a part of that and watching all of what's gone on in our schools up close and personal in the last eight years.
All right. And the first question, we'll start with Jill, is what do you think are the biggest challenges facing the district right now?
So the Brattleboro Town School District in the time that I've been on has seen probably two biggest challenges. One is the decrease in the number of students, which increases our cost. So looking at our budget every year and trying to figure out how to meet the needs with a decreasing number means that you increase the amount you're spending per student. And then the correlation of that is also that with the decreasing student numbers, we continue to see increasing need. I'm thrilled that our schools have been able to go forward with a universal meals program. I think that's three years that we've had that now, so that all of the children do not have to worry if they're on food insecurity or not. We already had programs and we continue programs where we send food home in backpacks. For the weekend, we have a summer meal program where we feed kids and over the breaks and vacations as well. But every child can eat free, both breakfast and lunch. So food insecurity has been a huge issue, behavioral challenges, and then supporting our families all the way around from kind of a net from the entire family. To that end, we have put in a Green Street social worker as of last year's budget. The year before that, we had an Academy social worker. The Academy position started with a grant and then we brought it to the town and the town has been incredibly supportive of making sure that we can give the childrens and families what they need. And so continuing to see the needs of our children and making sure that we can meet them as we go forward, if we go forward to a completion of the merger, which we are officially by law already a merged unit, making sure that those supports are sustained in a larger group still will be a challenge.
In agreement with what Jill said, I see the biggest challenges as the poverty and trauma that a lot of our students are experiencing. The latest statistics from the Agency of Education had all three of our town schools, over 80% of the students qualify for free and reduced lunch. Now, as Jill said, that's just a measurement because we give everyone lunch, whether they qualify for anything. But the fact that 80% of the kids who are in Brattleboro Elementary School are living in poverty is an immense challenge and it's mind-boggling to really think about that. That much of our community is living in poverty. And along with the stress that just poverty brings, a lot of the students also have experienced other types of trauma. And just listening to some of the accounts of our administrators about the stuff that they're dealing with at school that is completely apart from the educational mission, but basically, you know, being called on to intervene in life-threatening or trauma-threatening situations for these students, a lot of it is linked to opiate issues and it's something that really impacts kids and their ability to receive an educational experience. So the wraparound supports that Jill mentioned are absolutely essential to the families in our school district. And additionally, there's the piece of meeting the emotional needs of the kids who have suffered these kinds of events and experiences. So I would say by far that is our most biggest challenge as a district.
I feel that to, again, touch or go back to what I touched on in my opening statement, the biggest challenge is teaching children about the world that they live in and about why it is the way it is, because it's going to stay the way it is if they don't, you know, if you keep doing the same thing. If you don't understand your history, you will never do anything that will change what you're doing. And an example, as my colleagues mentioned, we deal with a lot of poverty and the issues with children that arise from that poverty. That's one side of it, dealing with the children and the issues. The other side of it is recognizing that the poverty continues to get worse and therefore, along with dealing with the problems, we have to be teaching children about why there is poverty, so that they will have, when they become adults, some clue as to how to attack that problem because it continues to get worse. So all of these issues, whether it's poverty, and they can all be done through the subjects that we already teach. You can teach about poverty and math and economics. You can teach about biology through the environment and chemistry through the environment. And any subject you want can be tied to very real things happening in the world. And I think the focus needs to be not, as it has been, very formally and specifically for the last 100 or 150 years, on training children to fill labor for industry, but rather teaching children to become adults who understand their country, who believe in their country, in democracy, who understand its problems, who have studied some humanities, and who are in a better position to become more complete and fulfilled human beings.
So what I was going to say is one of the biggest issues, along with equity and decreasing student populations, which I'll touch on in a second, is actually college and career readiness. So a little bit different from what Spoon just said, but I think actually gets to the same point, which is he's suggesting a lot of critical thinking skills, which are important not only for citizens, but also so that you can eventually be a citizen who has a job and who also, you know, becomes a lifelong learner. So I've talked to a lot of folks and what I've heard is that the Brattleboro Public Schools doesn't have a good way to track its students after graduation. So if we are focused on, you know, becoming a better citizen, we're not tracking that. If we are focused on becoming college and career ready, we're also, we don't really know if we're succeeding in that. And it's a little strange to be talking about this on a K-6 education board, many people may think, but a lot of the skills that go into college and career readiness are fostered in the K-6 grades. So grit, perseverance, collaboration, teamwork, analytical thinking, all these things come early in life and are only exacerbated as you get onto middle school and high school. So some of these are actually ways, like Spoon said, that can help for people to raise themselves out of poverty with the correct supports. Because I think that's key too, is if you don't have people to look up to that are actually doing these things and the proper mentorship, there's the idea of pulling yourselves up by the bootstraps seems extremely old-fashioned and I don't agree with that. So I would say that college and career readiness is probably one of the biggest issues. A decreasing student population, to me, strikes me as a really large issue, probably not only for the schools, but also one that we could work on with the select board and community collaborators, because it's a problem overall in Brattleboro that young families aren't moving into the town.
That's a lot to think about. The words that I had on my notes, poverty is a huge challenge. The achievement gap, when children come to our schools, all second graders, it's like, what is a second grade child? Equity is the hardest thing for schools to try to encourage or correct for, because children don't come to us from equitable situations. I know as a music teacher, I'm thinking of some heartbreaking things where a child with a solo isn't at the concert. They were planning to be there and then you find out, well, they were home because their parent could not get them there through some traumatic situation going on in the family. And I know most teachers that I worked with ended up providing rides for children, many of the children, because that's another way to get equity. We don't really know what the world's going to look like in 20 years. None of us do. Many of us won't be here in 20 years. So when we educate children, I do find myself trying to square the circle between the critical, creative, problem-solving, imaginative things that are so important in a changing world and then basic skills. And we're trying to do these in the same classroom. We have children, I have seen high-performing children and families leave our public schools and it breaks my heart. A child who's an excellent musician, an excellent student, but the schools, as good as they are, and I am a huge promoter of public schools and our schools here in Brattleboro, but it breaks my heart when a student who adds so much and a family adds so much leaves our schools. That's one of the biggest challenges that we've all mentioned here tonight. It's a long list.
All right. I suspect there will be some questions about Act 46 later on, but I'm wondering, would you be interested in serving on the merged board if the Act 46 merger goes through? Start with Andy.
That's a great question and it's one I've wrestled with because it's, as Chris mentioned, this board could be dissolved on June 30th if there's not legislative or court action. Act 46 and the so-called forced mergers. Let's not forget, we're already in a merger and I'm not referring to the one that Jill mentioned, I'm meaning our supervisor union. We have been merged and collaborating for many, many years. So I have thought in getting ready for this running for the school board that yes, I would consider that. I definitely would. I have been a very public, I don't know if any of you have noticed, my letters to the paper, speaking at meetings. I have been not critical of Act 46's goals. I sometimes feel like people that have questioned the implementation of Act 46 have been described as being against the law, against the Act 46 legislation. But who's not for greater equity, more efficient cost, and more transparent decision-making that everyone can have access to? The goals of Act 46 are incredibly good. I would be, I'd have, I am concerned about how we would achieve those goals, even with a merged board. Some of you may not know that Brattleboro is actually a merged board. We have three elementary schools with one board. When I started teaching in 1985, I started at Canal Street School. We had 80% free and reduced lunch. The other schools were in the range of 20 and 30%. That was under one board. Just because you merge, that doesn't mean you've solved all these three things. Merging does not guarantee those three things. The work begins when you sit down with that merged board and try to make it happen.
So I think this is a pretty political question because I just want to say that the assumption is that if you say you're for, or you would apply or, you know, be a candidate on the merged board, that then you are therefore pro-merger. And so I kind of want to separate that. I would be a candidate for the merge board, although I'm not necessarily pro-merger. And I think the reason is that my skills and experience would apply either way and I'd like to see that brought to either board, and whether or not that be the three schools in Brattleboro or the broader school district. Ultimately, I hope to increase the voice for the community and teachers and so either way, I would try to do that. And I think one of the big things about the merger that I'm really not in favor of is the fact that it lacked a lot of community voice. So there wasn't community or teachers or school staff involved in the process and I really think that ultimately, a plan that people have to implement has to have their influence. So I guess that's my response.
I always find it very interesting when I hear the word political connected to education. And unfortunately, we don't have the time here. I would love to have a whole time like this devoted to just that, because it's so interesting and it's so important because it does underlie so much of what happens in education in the state, which is to say that often things that happen don't have less to do with education than for some other political end. That aside, I will probably run for the merge board if that happens. I don't see, since people are commenting on that, I don't really see in most ways much change. After all, if the merger was all said and done, same administrators, same curriculum, same philosophy, mission statement, teachers, unions, school buildings, nothing changes right down to the janitors. So to think that everything can be the same and would end up being different is hard to imagine. One thing though will change is that the parents in the outlying communities in particular will be considerably more disconnected from their schools. It's going to be much harder to communicate with, to hear from, to understand what goes on in the school boards. The meetings will get moved around and in many cases, there'll be a half an hour's ride for somebody. And I think that disconnect, which was a major issue, is a major issue. But as Andy mentioned, essentially, this only affects the elementary schools because the high schools all over the state have been merged all along. And in conclusion, I never really supported Act 46 because education in the elementary schools has everything to do with the teachers and very little to do with the programs.
I will go ahead and just answer the question that was asked. Yes, I would be interested in serving on the merged board. I think it's interesting and, but kind of really limited and reductive to view people as pro-merger or anti-merger. You know, I think that all of us who have served as school board members have been tasked with, you must figure out what is the best way for your school to comply with the law that has already been passed. And, well, in Spoon's, in my case, Jill was on the board before the law, but she obviously didn't have any part in passing the law. So our role was and continues to be to represent the interests of our towns and schools as we try to comply with the law that our legislators have created. And I think that as a board member on the merged board, I would love to continue representing the interests of Brattleboro. I think that while we do have some decline in student numbers, our school district is probably the most insulated from the financial impact of that compared with the other elementary districts, because when you have 700 kids, if the numbers go up and down a little bit each year, you can absorb that much more easily than if you have 95 kids. And so for us, it didn't seem as direly needed of some sort of legislative solution. So I can understand why a lot of people in the community wished that the choice they were offered was, should we merge or not merge? But as the state has decided, you're merged unless we have some decision by the legislators or the courts that says otherwise. Now, our role is to kind of see how we can continue the work that we've been doing to keep our schools running and support all of the students in the schools the best way that we can. So that's kind of how I see things. I know that I've heard people have told me that I'm pro-merger. I was surprised to hear that, but I really don't think that's a helpful framework of viewing this. Instead, I think that when we look at, you know, what is the best structure for a merged entity? If I'm on the board, I would really like to reexamine that because I think that what the articles of agreement that were put before the voters had created a lot more equity for Brattleboro and a lot more protections for the outlying towns against some of the things that people fear like school closures. And the state didn't put any of that in the articles that they chose for us. So now we are two members of an eight-member board and they were moved, I think we had a five-year ban on any school closures that they also took away. So I think that there's going to be a lot of really important conversations about how to form this. to form this and maybe create some more protections for all of us in that.
So I've been fairly vocal in my thoughts on Act 46. I'll echo with Robin that it is, it's a law. We didn't make any choices about whether or not as school board members, we decided that this was a law or not. It is a law. So I do want to correct a couple of inaccuracies that other folks said. For one thing, this is not a K to 6 board. This is a pre-K to 6 board, and we're actually prenatal care all the way up through the end of 6th grade. At this point, we don't include just the three schools of Brattleboro either. We are early education, the early Head Start program, the Head Start program. We actually have facilities that we oversee on this board that are not even in Brattleboro. There's two schools up in Westminster. So this board has already been looking at pre-K all the way through 6th grade. The merger brings us from pre-K all the way to the end of high school. We also, what changes, as Spoon was talking about, is the vision for all of us becomes a united vision from pre-K for all of us in all of these communities that are merging, which at this point are Brattleboro, Guilford, Dummerston, and Putney. And then Vernon stays in the supervisory union at this point. And the way, as Robin is referring to, what the state has mandated also brings us together as a supervisory union of two districts, the merged district of the four towns I referred to, plus Vernon, and the supervisory union board currently, by law, of three members from each district, meaning three members for the supervisory union board from Vernon and three members from the rest of us. Vernon has sent out a letter to all of us and the boards, and they would like to ask for a different structure, so that we would have a more equal supervisory union board. However, the current law is that. There's also been some discussion that Vernon has been sent away. That's also not true under the law right now, currently. I didn't answer the question whether or not I would run. I'm undecided on that, truly. I also think, just to the leadership council and working more specifically with high school, as Robin has said, I started with my kids in elementary school, and they do grow up.
All right. Now we'll open it up to the public. Does anybody have a question? Sure. I want to keep that there. And please state your name before you ask your question.
I'm Mike Neal. I go to that high school. I'm a junior this year. And I don't know if you guys have heard about the youth vote bill, which might be passed in March potentially. But I was just wondering how you would feel if a student were to be elected onto the board, and how you'd feel about them having an equal vote to you on the board? Yeah, that's it. If a student were to be on the board, how would you feel about them having an equal vote?
I didn't know. Do we have a structure that we're all going to answer?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So, good news. In the process that we've already gone through during the last four years of the leadership councils and the whole study committee, we had that answer. And the answer was that we definitely wanted to put students on the board. We have leadership councils. I think we had it actually on the leadership council, not on the board. The state-mandated board does not have anything like that, but I think that would be something that definitely comes up. We started it in our thoughts on the study committee, as have already the middle schoolers, and actually having a seat at the table on the leadership councils.
So the youth vote proposition is the idea that 16-year-olds and up would be allowed to vote in municipal elections and/or serve on municipal boards. I am absolutely in favor of it. I think that there are some very brilliant, passionate, and committed 16 and 17-year-olds in this town beyond all the 18 and up old folks. And I think that students can bring a really valuable perspective to the board and to just voting at all. I know that some people feel that, you know, the law is 18, because that's when you become mature, but as we know from teaching and educating students, everyone doesn't mature magically on one day. And if people feel that they are mature enough to cast a vote or to serve on a board, then I'm all in favor of that.
I will, I'll third that. I didn't come quite so easily to agreeing and supporting the youth vote, but with a lot of help from my friends, I began to see some real wisdom in it. First of all, of course, as my colleague Robin says, if a young person has an interest in voting, they're probably going to care a lot and probably know as much or more than most people much older who do vote. So I think that's a plus. It'll stimulate that. Also, I hope that it will stimulate the schools to teach a great deal more about democracy and electoral politics and stuff like that. That kind of thing has been sorely lacking in our schools for generations, as reflected in the very low turnouts that we see in the local elections. So in short, I'd be happy to see a student on a board.
I'd also love to see a student on the board. From my perspective, since I wasn't involved in the youth vote work here in Brattleboro, I do know that working with governance, having teachers, students, and community members in the policymaking process actually has real outcomes. And so policy, when implemented, is more effective, because it takes into account the fact that people who were actually affected by the policy had an investment in it. So when it rolls out, you don't have all these kind of like implementation glitches, because it was already really thought about well at the beginning. And so I would say, especially having students involved in that process, when they are the ones who will be either not receiving, because they're not like bats that are receiving the education, but really, the people who it matters most to is really important. So I would love to see that, and I think the research side really suggests that that has a powerful impact. So I love that.
Well, it's unanimous. I completely agree. Some of the best leading going on right now on a number of social issues is coming from young people that are below the age of voting in our country, and yet they are providing some of the most insightful and powerful leadership. But I think putting someone on a board is only part of it. One of the issues that I have with the way the study group operated is I think there was more flexibility in the paths, but an idea got going early for the preferred merger. And there were other paths within Act 46. Even our senator, one of our senators in this district, Becca Ballant, said that she thought that there was an exit ramp built into Act 46. And there was a lot of, there was more diverse thinking that went into Act 46 than got implemented. And just putting more diverse voices into the process isn't the whole thing. You actually have to consider openly, with transparency, a variety of choices, and you have to convince the community to take one of those choices. We've worked on Act 46 for four years, and what do we have? We have a set of articles that failed in all four towns. We have an imposed set of articles from the state. We have a member of our union who is somewhat marginalized, Vernon, by the process, and nobody's fault, it was built into the law. We have one town in our supervisory union that's resorted to legal action. Seven of our 21 or two towns in Wyndham County are involved in court action. There's not a whole lot of momentum on Act 46. Putting more voices on the board is a great start, but we actually have to listen to those voices.
Hi. You got me, Maria? My name is Mark. I live in Brattleboro. I have the luck to work with youth in this town on a few different things, including some on the youth vote. And every school year, I hear from both white students and students of color about appallingly racist statements and behavior, certainly by students where there is unchecked, open white supremacy in the classrooms and hallways, but also by teachers. And some of this is unintentional, but nonetheless, crisis-level unacceptable, but all too often, it's not only intentional, but aggressive, even assaultive. So my question is, what kind of resources on a tight budget are you willing to either devote and/or go out and get for the clear need for professional development and accountability and student education and accountability around race, racism, whiteness, and white supremacy?
Starting again? Yeah. Thank you for that question. I don't know. I wrote letters to the paper about Kaia Morris and what happened over in Bennington. She came and spoke at our Martin Luther King event at Center Church and spoke very eloquently about the ethnic studies bill and how it languished last year in our legislature. This year, it was passed unanimously in the House, and the Senate is still working on it. We, those kinds of things do open the door to more resources. We have resources right in Brattleboro. We have the Vermont Partnership for Diversity right here, Equity and Diversity right here in Brattleboro. We have a district diversity committee that I served as a representative for a number of years when I was on the staff at Oak Grove School. It needs more emphasis. I'm totally with you. I'm a huge fan of public education. There have been instances of homophobia, racism, you name it. Two minutes is a brutal time limit. But in my notes, I did say that we are increasingly culturally diverse, cognitively diverse, economically diverse, and yet every one of those students is an integral part of our democracy. And they're not just a problem to be solved, they're a resource. The people that are being mistreated like that, their voices we should be listening to. And I think a big part of it, I think sometimes we talk about, I know with my daughter with special needs, what do we call it when, you know, confidentiality. Confidentiality is important when it protects, but it also can disguise. It's sometimes good to be open about our differences and our experiences. And if we cloud everything in confidentiality sometimes, I'm not saying to expose things people don't want to have exposed, but we could, we have a lot more resources in our schools, a lot more voices that haven't been heard.
So I don't know the full gamut of what resources we could dedicate to things at this point, but if I was elected, hopefully I would, or definitely I would learn that. But I can say, one experience that I've had related to this is, I have a good friend who teaches in New York City, and most of the teachers there are white teachers, and most of the students are of, you know, a variety of different ethnicities and races, but not predominantly white. And what he suggested has really worked at his school, and I don't know if it would work here, but they do a lot of microaggressions trainings. And I thought it was really interesting, because he was like, yeah, half of our professional development time is actually spent, like, once a month, we sit around in a circle, and literally, we get called out for things that we might have said that, you know, were biased, or really were small things, but people felt harm from that. And so they might be things that you didn't even, you're like, oh, I didn't mean to be, you know, racist. I didn't even know that was racist. But it's starting to attack it at that level, especially for the faculty and staff, because I think some students might be, you know, hearing these things outside of school, but if it becomes unacceptable for faculty and staff to be doing that, or saying anything that's even like a little bit biased, then that will breed down to how the culture of the school is and what's expected. So I've seen that as a great thing, and that's one thing I would suggest we look into and think about.
About three years ago, I ended up in some travels down in New Orleans, staying with an old friend whose career has been doing race education work around the United States. And I was there for a while down in New Orleans and got an education that I didn't believe that I didn't have. She began to show me things and take me around places and teach me some things about history, about white privilege, about et cetera, et cetera. And I was just surprised that, being the old radical that I'm thought of as, and everything that I had read and done, or whatever, all my life, how little I really knew about black history in this country. And you have to ask yourself, how is it that 400 years later, we're still trying to convince ourselves that Black Lives Matter? And this is an enormous failure on the part of American education for all of our history. And it's not an accident. In 1954, when, what was it, Brown versus the Board of Education passed, and white people were, who felt the white liberals were celebrating that segregation was over, and in the meantime, hundreds of thousands of black teachers were being fired throughout the South, because parents didn't want to send their kids to a school with a black teacher. And so nothing really changed there. And in fact, as we see, nothing really changed much anywhere. And we are today involved with diversity, as we must be, as much as we always had to have been.
So this is a conversation that I've been bringing to our board for the past couple of years, and I thank you very much for asking this question. Mike, was it Mike?
Mark.
Mark, thank you. There are a couple of hurdles to answering this, one of which is that the financial resources is only one piece of this. And what I have found out from the conversations that we've had thus far is that another significant hurdle is the time. So teachers have professional development time built into their contracts, and there's only so much that they have in a year, and they schedule these things sometimes two years out, trying to get, you know, everything planned. So getting in what we have already, a district with, as Jill mentioned, I think, five schools, depending on how many schools you count EES as, is significantly a logistical problem. So also, I don't have a really good off-the-top-of-the-head idea of what numbers are appropriate for this. I will say, I'm very, very committed to doing some improvement in this area, and generally, my vision for this is that we could bring teacher leaders as a paid role on the staff of each of our schools, that then we could have a more logistically possible thing to give deep, meaningful training to a smaller number of people, and then those people bringing it and sharing it throughout the year with the rest of their staff. Because even if you devote a big amount of money and a big amount of time to everyone, which I think when we looked at this, when I first said, let's have a training for all the staff, it was about 200 people, okay? So for everyone to do that and have like a day-long or two-day-long training for all of those people, even if we did all that, and that was the whole thing, it would not create meaningful change. It has to be an ongoing commitment that we revisit and set goals and then check in with those goals. So I think what we really need to do is to create a structure that allows for that in our schools. Now, for the specific issue of racial harassment, I do think that that's something that we could address maybe from an administrator level, of creating some more equitable feeling solutions to that, because I know from talking to people who have been on the receiving side of this, that it often feels, when we are following the state-mandated rules of how you are supposed to address it, that it ends up making the victims feel that they are the ones being investigated for whether or not they're telling the truth. And that is atrocious. So I feel like we need a change there, but I don't blame any of our administrators exactly for that, because that is how the state says that you're supposed to do it. So we really need a sea change in the way that we're handling this. But my hope is that by bringing this into the lens of all of our educators and our curriculum, that our net end goal is going to be that we create a deeper understanding, a more just and compassionate society for all the kids. This isn't just about helping students who are part of a marginalized group, it's about helping all children see the world as it really is. helping all children see the world as it really is.
So, so this, as Robyn's speaking passionately, Robyn has really spearheaded this in the last two or three years that she's been with us. And it's something we continue to grapple with as a board, and I, I thank you too for the question. It's, we've had a lot of discussions. We have done some very specific actions that I think are nice to, to know about here. We did a complete diversity training, not complete, I don't think you ever get complete on this, sorry, on some inherent bias, but we did some for the board. We've also done some on gender expression, and those were four hours each, I think, for our board alone, just to, to start us, which, when we do training, it's the board and then also all of the administrators. Off of that, the administrators are already thinking and moving forward on some of the actions that they could take on that. And they are looking ahead, as Robyn said, into the lineup that's already established for the professional development that the teachers and the staff would get. We're also, we've asked our administrators, and they are coming forward with it and telling us each meeting when there is something that's going on. And there are some fun things that go on that are not so clearly, hey, we're looking at racism or something, but just, look, when we did our Who Am I poems, look at all the different places that we're represented in. And so some of those things, just calling out and drawing attention so that we know that, as a, as a board, but so that the kids are all hearing as a community, that look who, look who we are. There's a new position that's supported on the supervisory union level that we voted in, all of us on the supervisory union, that's at halftime position with full-time benefits, if I remember correctly.
Proportionate benefits to the...
You can't do that. So I think we did the, I think it's full-time benefits. No, proportionate benefits? Okay, they're all correct. So, so it's, and then there is a one full-time position already as a diversity coordinator, and that position used to be at the high school, but we've switched that to a supervisory union position in just the last year. So that that position is trying to lead out to the entire supervisory union, instead of just being focused at BAMS and BUHS and the Career Center, would be that other board, or we're already done. But I, I think that's the, and we've also looked at our teachers looking at more diverse book choices and just different ways of, of leading, more awareness around that. And then finally too, we've, on this board have supported such things as additional funds for advertising in different spots to look for more diversity when we bring in staff.
My name is Roberta Crispino. I'm new to Brattleboro. Oh, okay. I don't, I don't think we need to go through everyone. How many students are there in the district? I guess the chair person.
So the district that we're talking about here is the Brattleboro Town School Board. So that's just our kids, I think we're at 775 roughly.
I think that's just the elementary.
Right, and the preschool. Right, so that would be the Brattleboro Town School District.
Okay, and what is the mission statement of the school board?
Mission statement of the school board? It's on the, it's on the website, but it's obviously something to do with education. I don't know it off the top of my head, no.
Okay. When I came to town, I first looked at the newspaper and I saw it was the reformer. I said, ooh. You know, I taught school for a number of years and ended up as a reformer, an educational reformer. I taught elementary school, and pretty much elementary school in my experience has been feminine values. I had all single Catholic, Irish Catholic women growing up in public school. It was, it was feminine values. You don't get a lot of males going into elementary school, and I don't know if there's a balance here or not in, in your schools, you know, male and female. The other thing is, is that when I went to school in the 50s, it was before the Supreme Court banned prayer in public school. And so spiritual practices and spiritual principles in public school today doesn't seem to be very evident, pretty much in society today. There isn't that concern for our individual similarities, it's more of our individual differences. So, and I don't know how to, you know, how, you know, how much, how to combat that, but it seems that that's what's lacking today in public school. It seems like there is, there isn't that emphasis on, on spiritual principles.
So I, I do have our mission statement, in case you want, and it's a mission statement that's SEU-wide, which would be all of us in the supervisory union. It's to provide a safe, inclusive, and supportive environment where all students grow academically, socially, and emotionally, and are challenged to reach their true potential as local and global community members.
Yeah, push it up.
I'm here under false pretenses. I was supposed to go to another meeting and I got interested in this one. I'm here for, I'm from Dummerston. But I'm just questioning, we were talking about the prejudice thing, and I wonder whether anything is done to help the parents, because, you know, you're teaching the children in the school, and then they're going home and their parents, you know, the, the black people and white people and Spanish and whoever, they're all equal, and then the kids go home and their parents don't, you know, are telling them that they're not. And I wonder if anything is ever done to maybe draw the parents into the, that kind of education of teaching the children, of, you know, explaining why they should not do that and, and that kind of thing. That's one question I have. The other is that, and I just mentioned this in passing, but I went to the last one-room school in Connecticut, back in the 1930s and 40s, and we had five grades, one teacher, 30 kids, and you heard everything. Well, grammar school is the same thing over and over, you just go a little bit further each year. But some children learn arithmetic in the first grade and some of them don't learn until the third grade. But if you're hearing it over and over, my brother was so dyslexic you wouldn't believe it, and yet, and he went to the same school, and he had no trouble getting into college later on because he heard this stuff over and over and over. It's a wonderful education, and a lot of foreign schools do it, they combine grades. And I wonder if we ever think about that, because it, you know, combining two or three grades, the teachers like it because they don't have to learn a whole bunch of new kids every year either, so just two things to think about.
All right, thanks, Jill. Do you want to start?
So there's two questions, I think. The first was on the training of parents or getting information back out to parents of diversity and racial education. So, yes, I feel like we do some of that in that we have parent meetings and, on specific topics. I don't think a parent meeting, I've never seen a parent meeting advertised saying, come in and recognize your inherent racial bias or something, and I don't think that would go over real well. But definitely that there, there is opportunity to get information back to parents through the parent meetings. Most of them that I've seen have been more on keeping your kids safe in a digital world or helping understand the behavioral protocols that are being used in the school, and I like that because sometimes I think I can use it at home as well. So I, I guess that would be my quick answer on the racial training from the school. The second question, if I heard it correctly, is more on repeating and combining grades. In my time at the Academy School, we did have a multi-age classroom for several years that grew out of an uneven number of children, and so it was an easy way to move the kids through the system. It's not something that's been used in my time on the board, but definitely there are, in our school structures already in the classrooms, there's time when they're pulling kids out all the time for either additional training or for some remediation training. So it, it is being repeated in different ways already, even if it's not actually a combination of classes. So you may have a child in there that, in this particular section of math, is not understanding and needs remediation, and then in the next particular section of math actually could be advanced. And so there is built into our schools already the flexibility of, of pulling and moving.
The other advantage of it was that you don't have the fifth graders chasing, just the sixth graders chasing, the fifth grader around the playground. We're, we're together. Other people in the other schools said the same thing, that the kids run to a lot of other ages more hurts earlier.
So I actually went to a mixed-grade school also, and it was a terrific experience for me as well. But I think that today, our educational strategies and techniques are so much more nuanced and tailored to the individual student that you wouldn't have to just listen to the same education year after year until you got it, but instead that student who was struggling would be targeted with specific tutoring or assistance that would help them to, hopefully during that school year, meet up with their peers. And it's actually something that is one of our biggest goals as a school district, is helping students who are lagging behind grade level to meet up with their peers by giving tailored, individualized support to those kids. The mixed-grade classrooms though is a great solution for when a school population is very small, and I think that's something that, you know, we may look at as a more emerged board when we're trying to keep all of our schools successful that may have smaller numbers of student population. As for the parent training, I will say that as, during my preschool board days, I was part of a group that organized an event at Academy School that was about, it was a picture book night where we had picture books that were on different topics that were basically giving an education exactly like what you are describing, and parents were invited to come with their kids, and we had a meal that the kids prepared, and then they would, we would read the stories in small groups, and there was discussion questions provided by a moderator to kind of dig into those issues and help, you know, the families have these conversations. And now, serving as our school board's delegate to the Diversity and Equity Committee, that's something that we're trying to get going at all of our schools in the SEU.
You raised some very interesting things that I hadn't thought much about, actually hadn't thought about at all, and that was the role of schools in adult education, and to what extent our schools might take in a proactive position on that and what they can do. It was also interesting to hear you talk about the one-room schoolhouse because I've heard so much about it over the years, and of course it really reflects on this whole thing with the merger, where the state in its wisdom seems to insist that small schools were inadequate, and yet kids coming out of small schools generally do quite well. And, and parents in, in towns with small schools were willing to maintain their schools and to have them. That's where they wanted their kids to attend school. So I, I do, there was a very famous example up here, Claire Oglesby up in West West, and in a two-room schoolhouse in which, when you talked to the, the students who went through, she was there for 35 years, and it, she created an education there that stayed with her kids for the rest of their lives and shaped the rest of their lives. So that stuff can happen, doesn't necessarily always happen, but unfortunately, again, the state didn't give towns a choice. So I do, I do, I like, it's a very interesting idea of mixed grades in rooms. I don't know, even though we might have a school with 300 students in it, I, I don't know why yet there can't be some rooms with mixed students in it. It's just, I mean, you say something and, and someone says, well, we just don't do it, but that's not an answer.
Thank you. So I guess I also want to answer your question, which is about religion in the schools. Although we typically think of church and state as separate, I think the spiritual question is important. I run a yoga and meditation retreat center, so it seems really apropos that I speak about this. And I think that it doesn't have to be thought of in spirituality or religion in those terms. I think what spirituality gets at is community connectedness and teaching people to be responsible for their own transformation. And it's interesting because we actually had a family retreat recently that relates to this, is we had adults and kids come, you know, families obviously, and it was really interesting because the parents had signed the kids up for this retreat, and we were doing traditional yoga in the morning, and the kids were the run, running down wanting the yoga. The parents were like sleeping upstairs and were like, okay, like you guys have to get a little motivated too. But it speaks to this kind of need to have something, it doesn't have to be yoga, but have something that is, helps inner growth. And I think that's what will make a better society and a better community for us here in Brattleboro. So I thank you for bringing up that question. As for the, I'll probably only have time to answer one of your questions, but I did teach in a Montessori school, and so that was a wonderful experience because it is multi-grade. So I taught fourth through sixth grade Spanish, and I was new to the Montessori approach. I had went to, you know, public school and didn't have experience with that, but I thought it was really wonderful because the way you can differentiate to students was just priceless. I remember one student who, he was a third grader who got moved up to the fourth grade because he had, was pretty gifted, and I'll make this short. But the case was is he could access sixth grade mathematics in that classroom and be paired with sixth graders, where his ELA skills and reading skills were still at the fourth grade level. And so he was put in the fourth grade reading group, and people didn't really, they're like, yeah, man, that kid's really good at math, you know? They didn't really think about it as far as like he had to skip a grade because he had, was good in math, or, or maybe misplacing him, making him feel socially awkward. I think there's real benefits in it. I don't know about how, you know, how to do that actually in the public schools, or if it's, you know, can be applied, or what principles could be taken so that we can differentiate better, but I think it's a lovely idea.
Yeah, I was also going to try to wrap these up, because again, two minutes is a lot of tackle these questions. But as an arts educator, we, this, children are naturally drawn to the arts, and the arts deal with the unknown, they deal with pondering the big questions, they ponder, they, they deal with the non-verbal. And so there's a lot of questioning that goes on. Songs, I often felt like, gee, we have separation of church and state, but I can sing a Native American chant in a public school music program, and nobody bats an eye because it's part of cultural understanding. And to watch children enter into that world of chant, it comes naturally to childhood. I'm kind of a specialist in intergenerational activity as a music teacher in our schools. I've done countless family-type dances where you have an evening at all the schools I've ever taught at, many, many times, parents through kindergarteners, sixth grade, even middle schoolers coming back to their alma mater to do folk dancing together as a team. We had an intergenerational chorus at one of my schools where we had adult volunteers coming in. I totally agree with you that we, focusing everybody on grade level, this is like the old factory model. And it's one of my fears about the, one of the emphasis in education now on the data collection, is that if we can get really focused on these specific little areas and lose the forest, and children, again, going back, we don't know what the world's going to really be like in 20 years. And the arts are an incredible way where we get the unknown, the pondering, and we also have, I'll just take another couple seconds here, multi-tiered. You talked about different levels, that's part of childhood. Kids are learning all, one of my favorite quotes, and I'll end with this, "Children are always learning, but they're not always learning what we're teaching them." And we should be respectful of that.
A philosophical question for all of you. School vouchers, if it were economically feasible, would you as a board member favor vouchers for students in the district to go to private schools?
Do I get to handle that one first? Boy, what an honor. You know, the thing is, if we say, some children have vouchers, their families have enough means to choose from the entire panoply of educational opportunities in our community, and many do, as I referenced earlier. If there was a system where it was a completely... If there was a system where it was a completely level playing field, and I mean completely level, one of the things I'm proudest of in public education, we don't have an admissions department. What we do, it's called the front door. But independent schools have admissions departments. And if we can solve that philosophical problem and make all educational opportunity equally available to all families and all students so that it served individual need, I would consider it. I'm not Dr. Nair, but I'm troubled by the access question. I've not seen that work. Vermont has held the line against charter schools for that very reason. That, you know, our neighbors in Massachusetts have charter schools. And when I see how they're administered, because I have friends who make use of charter schools, there's a little bit of elitism that goes along in there. And we've tried to hold the line on equality of access in Vermont, and I'm proud of that.
So I guess it would depend on what the statistics for other places that had done vouchers were around what it does to diversity. If vouchers were actually taken mostly by students that, and left a population of students back that were more socially, economically disadvantaged in the public schools, then I wouldn't want to see that. But if it was kind of an equal playing field and many kids across socioeconomic brackets took vouchers and went to different schools, I'd have to probably do a little bit more thinking on that if I, if I thought that was a good idea. I do know that when vouchers have been used, or in cases where I've heard vouchers being used before, it actually goes back to the religion question. It's often to Catholic schools. So that would be a good question for the voters, really not, you know, that we could find out information on saying like, "What do you all think about the schooling options? And would you like to see your tax money used for vouchers?" It would probably be more than me making that decision, although once I, I could gather the information for everybody. And once I had that, I'd probably have a really much stronger opinion on it that I could share with folks. But it would ultimately be up to you because you're also funding it.
I'm also very much of the mind that every child must have access to the same quality education. In fact, our democracy depends upon just that. And because a democracy depends on an educated and an informed population. And, and so first and foremost, every kid has to be guaranteed the same quality education. I think I was reading in that film of Michael Moore when he was looking at the schools in Finland or something like that or somewhere. They have a law there, I think that was where, private schools cannot charge tuition. And so that's an interesting, maybe that, that sort of takes out the question of the voucher. And, and just now has the question of the quality of the schools. But the way it's worked so far in this country, I feel that the vouchers have been a failure because they have enabled the wealthy kids to get the best education and left the poorer kids concentrated in public schools with less access, with a lot less money and less access to everything.
I'm going to give a more definitive answer on this one. I am absolutely not in favor of vouchers. I think that they, the idea of taking our school budget and sending some of that to say, "Go and give that tuition to a private school" would be a death knell for our public schools. I think that it's really a choice that parents can make if they feel their child's needs are better served at a private school. And I really wish that that choice was available equally to everyone. However, private schools do not have any regulation or law that says they must provide education to everyone. They provide education to the people that come there. And they can say, "I'm sorry, your child, educational disability is not something we're able to accommodate here. You're going to have to go find your own school somewhere else." And public schools say, "We will teach everyone and we will do everything that we can to meet each student's needs. And if we cannot, we will pay for them to go somewhere where the needs are met." So we already have that built in to our system, that we are mandated, that if our school recognizes that we are unable to meet someone's needs, we do pay tuition for them to go to a school that can. But for parents to have the choice to go and spend that money on private schools and take that away from the budget of us trying to meet the needs of our extremely needful public school community, I think would be a really disastrous idea.
So this is a question I hadn't thought of at all. I have to say, everything Robin's saying is exactly what I've seen over the time of being on the board. Anybody who shows up at our door, we have to meet, period. That's our mandate. And we have to figure out how to do that at a cost that our taxpayers can afford. And, and we have to do it. That, that's, that's the law. And so anything that's unfair and skews that, I can't see how I can support. And unless I misunderstand what a voucher is, well, that, to me, would, would be doing exactly what Robin is indicating. So no. There's, that's been the most fascinating thing of being on the school board over these last eight years is it's easy and exciting for me as a person, and I think for any of us that are candidates, anybody who's interested, probably even those of you that came out on a blustery night, to get excited about one little part of the educational process. The school board role is only two things. It's to get the best quality education at a price the taxpayers can afford and support. That's it. So all of the things that we're talking about, they're all really great. And they are things that we look at and we think about. But those are the bottom lines for all of us is that we can go after all sorts of little things and think about it, but we still have to do it at a price that we can all afford. That's the whole public school. And I firmly believe in that. And that's why I've dedicated so much of my time personally to it. It's the way I think our society works really well.
Question, what's the protocol for asking? Can I just speak loudly?
Loudly.
Okay. My question is about resources in education for gifted students. As you're saying, education should be for all students. It's my understanding from talking to the superintendent, the three principals, many of the teachers, as well as guidance counselors, that there are no resources for gifted students other than giving worksheets. If they finish the work that they've been assigned, they're given extra worksheets. And this does a severe disservice to the student. It does a disservice to the community and to the nation as a whole by not supporting gifted students. And I unfortunately have not seen any gifted student resources in the town school district. And we've been living here for a while. So what are your thoughts on that? Thank you.
So, what was your name?
Crystal.
Crystal. So I'm shocked that you would say that you've talked to Lyle, the superintendent, and she would tell you that what we're doing is worksheets.
The previous superintendent.
To Ron. Okay. But I don't think, Ron would never have answered my question that way. So, so no, that hasn't been my own experience and that's definitely not what I see in the schools. I mentioned earlier, one of the things that I loved with my own kids, watching them in elementary school specifically, and then it happens throughout, they, they'd come home and they'd tell me, "Yeah, I was pulled out and I'm doing this thing over here." I'm like, "Well..." And I thought, "Do I ask my kid this or not?" But then finally I'd kind of get out and like, "Were they pulled out because they were beneath where they're supposed to be or above?" And it turns out the kids didn't even know because they're being pulled out and, and put into that special area all the time. So constantly, when we, when we ask for teachers to come in and talk to us, Crystal, they're telling us about how they're giving that extra they have in their curriculums and in their, their plans for the, the class, the challenge. Like in a math class, there's the challenge questions all the time. They're not even necessarily termed as bonuses or anything, but they're just, if you can meet that, that's your next one to do. There's different curriculum setup. There's always these parts that are being pulled out. And you're shaking your head, so perhaps you have a completely different experience. So I would, this is one of those lovely moments as a school board member over the eight years too, that's hard for me. Because when, when you come forward with something like that, I always want to find the answer and figure it out exactly. And it obviously has to go through the right channels and talk to the teachers and, and figure out what's going on. I can only tell you from a programmatic approach of what I've seen personally and what I've seen presented to me as a school board, that there are those opportunities. If your own child has not received that and you're hearing that that's not there, please talk to me about the, the protocols, or if you already know them, take that up the chain and, and see where you can go with that. Because they are being presented to us on the board that they are there.
I'm actually going to answer this one as a mom, not as a school board member. I will say that my experience as a parent of a gifted, two gifted children at Brattleboro Town Schools is not at all worksheet-based. They have a structure in the public schools where they have enrichment opportunities. At Academy School, they do it three times a week, where all kids, all kids receive specialized support. So they break up the class, they mix them around with kids from other rooms. Some kids need special assistance with getting up to grade level and stuff. Some people get the chance to work a little more deeply on something that they were doing at grade level. And some kids get the chance to do something that pushes them to a little bit beyond what the rest of the class was doing. Some of the projects that they have worked on in these things are engineering, bridge design, poetry, coding, and creative writing. So I can say from personal experience, I definitely know that there is a lot more than a next-level worksheet. Now, I know that for, you know, the in-classroom experience, sometimes the teachers will have an extra difficult, like Jill was saying about the math extension, that they can go beyond. If you finished all those and everyone else is still working, here, why don't you try these more challenging things? But that is only one small piece, and I would say the much less rewarding piece of what our schools offer gifted students to do.
I'm surprised, this is the elementary school level here that, that we're working with. I know in the high school, my friend has a daughter who's taking college-level stuff in, in, in high school. She's actually receiving college credits for courses. So apparently, at that level, there's a lot offered. It's interesting, I've always felt, you know, that if teachers taught kids how to think and they were gifted, nothing would ever slow, slow that child down. They're not going to miss anything in life if they come out of school interested in the world and, and, and ready, just with their eyes wide open and all the doors open. And, and I can't, I mean, I hear like Robin as a parent and other parents feel that their kids do get that, that kind of an education that, that stimulates them. So I just wonder exactly what it was that, that you felt your child, if it's your child you're talking about, is actually missing.
I know at BANZ, they don't have programs for gifted students. I'm told it's because of budget problems, issues. And I was told Academy School does have programs for gifted students, but not at Green Street. But it's based on whether the superintendent will let you change to the other school. But I think that does a disservice. I think that all the elementary schools should offer programs and options for gifted students.
So you bring up an interesting topic. When I worked in the public schools, I was a special educator. And I often thought about my experience in the Montessori school, which was this kind of intergrade education where gifted students could move up, students who needed remediation could, you know, either stay at grade level in this mixed-tier system or receive the supports they needed. And I'm not sure what supports are at each school for gifted students and if there are individual teachers, especially with such a small student population, that are dedicated to the gifted students. But I've always thought it would be a really interesting idea if special educators were not just with students who had IEPs, but if you had individual learning plans for students who were gifted. And maybe that's going on with these differentiated tiers of support at Academy and at other schools. But I'm, I'm not so sure. And it sounds like from your experience, potentially it's not. So it'd be lovely to think that not only was remediation handled by these special educators, but that this is a special education circumstance too, and that they could be utilized in a new way to support parents and the students who are, you know, maybe achieving above grade level or beyond. So maybe it's not an idea of, "Do we have the resources?" It's like, "How do we use the resources differently?" Because if there is one pool, then we need to think a little bit more about how to use that so that all students are serviced.
That's a great question. And it gets back to a comment I made earlier about, one of the hardest things I faced as a teacher in my career was students leaving the school because they didn't feel like they were getting challenged enough or the math curriculum was too oriented toward, perhaps with the testing in mind, that we need to get everybody to a certain level to, to score well on, on standardized tests. This is something that has been voiced by parents, so I'm just presenting an actual perceived reality in the community. So although I think it's a really real question, and I said it before, I think our public schools have a responsibility to meet the child with a disability, the child with a learning disorder, and the child who is bursting with curiosity. And that is tough. And I think you probably recognize how difficult that is. One of our strengths is small schools, small staffs. We have pretty small class size, but we have, we don't have huge numbers of staff in our schools. I would say as a parent, that, and as a teacher, we provide a rich set of opportunities for all children. It gets back to the access question. Who is a gifted child? Some of my most enjoyable music students in my career would probably never have been identified as a gifted, probably would have been more likely identified as a problem. I'm serious. And yet, they could sing. They had a natural affinity. We don't do a lot of aptitude testing. And that's something that's fascinated me as a music teacher. American music was created by, so most of the really iconic leaders of American music were probably eligible for free and reduced lunch. Okay? So when we say, "Who is gifted?", there's an issue of equity and how do we identify those children? And I think that our schools here, and I'm speaking both as a former teacher and a parent, have provided a rich tapestry. Book clubs, kids writing books, binding books, the arts are one of the great ways that we provide challenging experiences. Musicals in all of our schools, theater, even New England Youth Theater has theater in the schools program, where a student who wants more challenge can be in a play at New England Youth Theater. Poetry writing. I, I think we, we offer a lot. We may not have something that's called the Gifted and Talented Program, but for children that are hungry for more, it's there in our schools.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out. I want to thank the candidates for coming out. We're out of time. Thank you.
I'd just say, can we give a hand to Chris for being our moderator tonight?